Hi. Give me just a second, please. Bill, can you hear me? I can't hear these guys.
Catherine, I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you now, too. What is that a picture of that's under Joan Bowley?
I don't know.
That's a picture of the eruption of the sun.
The what?
Eruption on the sun.
Oh, it looks.
Strange.
It looks bizarre. I thought it was something else. Bill, I don't know if you, I don't know if Roger had a chance to call you, but he won't be at tonight's meeting. However, he and I have both talked about everything on the agenda.
Bill, we can't hear you. It doesn't seem your microphone is muted, but we can't hear you. Still no. Still not hearing you. Not only can't we hear you, but most of the time your mouth is below the camera, so we can't even tell if you're speaking. Okay, I, you may have to pick a different input. Yeah, you can hear us, okay. You're not muted, but if you, if you go to the microphone where, where it says mute and you pick the arrow, they want to check which microphone is active. Like Chris is coming in.
Can you hear me now?
There you go. We got you. Thank you.
I'm barely hearing you though now. Catherine, do you want to try to speak up?
Catherine, can you?
I can hear you.
Yeah, I'm hearing you very faintly. Can you turn the volume up on your computer, bro?
I don't know why. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but it's faintly.
How about the rest of you? Do I sound faint?
No, you're loud and clear.
You sound like you.
I don't know how to take that. Bill, you might want to go down and turn up your sound, your volume on your computer.
I'm talking now, Catherine.
Hey there.
I can, I can hear you, but only slightly.
Let me see the mouse for a second.
How about everybody else? Can you hear them?
And all the way up.
How's that? Is that any better?
Could hear you a little better.
Okay, that wasn't me.
No, that was me trying to turn up the volume for him, but it's not. It's already turned up.
It's 100%.
You'll probably just have to do all the talking, Bill.
Can you hear us now?
How's that? Is that any better?
I hear you, but I'm, you're not hearing me.
No, I'm hearing you, Bill.
No, we hear you.
We're good.
We're in business then. Sorry, guys.
All right, I've got 7:07 and I will call the meeting to order. And as Catherine mentioned, Roger is asked to be excused. He's got another commitment. And we will certainly acknowledge that. Um, that leaves Catherine and I as members of the board here from the public. We have a few guests. Rob Chernin, Paul Varga, Joan Bowley. I saw somebody, Christine Asibo. Is there anybody that would like to be heard as a member of the public?
Yes.
Christine, go ahead.
Yes, couple of questions. First question, is anything happening with the burned out house across from the fire station? There seem to be even more derelict cars.
There is an additional car there. I've been, we typically don't do a question and answer during comment from the public, but we'll make an exception in this, Christine. I have been working with town council as well as the, our zoning enforcement agent and, and our building department trying to do something on that. We've run into Lagerhead so far, but we're well aware of it and I'm, I've had about four meetings so far trying to get somewhere. It's very frustrating and I did notice about a month ago, we suddenly another car appeared there. It's, it's an eyesight, but my concern even more so, which I've been trying to stress in everybody and also have talked to Eastern Highland Health Department about environmental concerns. As you're well aware, that property is very close in proximity to the river. And it really concerns me about all the vehicles that are there and have been there unattended for so long, but we are doing everything that was in, I'm advised within our legal rights to do and, and I'm trying to do more on it, but I couldn't agree with you more that it's a concern. And I know you mentioned that a few meetings ago and we continue to follow up on it and frankly, it's very frustrating.
Thank you. I have one more, I guess not a question since you don't want to answer questions. I wonder when there might, well, it's a question, when there might be an update on what's happening with Cattle Rock.
We'll be talking about that in the near future. I can give you some information right now. We're working with Yale University. And we told, we were told as long as they, as soon as they come back in a session, they'll be studying, assigning a study team. They're going to be do, going in and doing in wetland identification, which I was very surprised when I found out we had never been done on the property. They'll be doing soil, soil testing and a whole plethora of things that will be able to identify exactly what the potential uses and what our capabilities are on that property. I'm told, Chris, the last time I, was it Roberta that looked into that? They expect it to take four or five months once they get rolling?
That's my understanding and we probably wouldn't be ready to apply for mediation grant till spring.
So it's in the works. I, I, I think Christine Asibo that once we do get that plan, it's going to be a whole new ballgame there and we're looking forward to that.
Great. Thanks a lot.
Okay, you have a good evening.
You too.
Anyone else? I know a couple of you are here for items that are on the agenda, but anybody else have general comments from the public? Hearing none, I'm going to move forward. The first selectman's briefing, I'll try to be brief. Pickle court update. I know we had some inquiries because we had some pooling that's taking space. In fact, tomorrow I'm going to be taking some pictures. I have met with Hinding, who is our contractor that did the resurfacing there last week. And they are recommending that we do some more work on that. The failure is the base, the foundation, which would be an extravagant fix in order to dig that whole thing up. We had considered it last year before we spent the 25,000 to get it in the condition it is now. And the cost would have been about five times that. Plus they weren't sure when they could be doing that work. What they think is they'd like to come back in the spring, do a reevaluation of that and make, make some recommendations for it. And of course, what I'm trying to do is find if we can hold them to anything under a warranty. Right now, what we're looking at, what they did, what they patched is working. It's other areas and it's a foundation sort of things there. What I also did, because I, I know I've got several inquiries from residents in town that are interested in more pickleball courts. I noticed that court is probably one of our busiest physical outdoor activities we have in town, setting aside perhaps baseball and soccer. And so while I had them in town, I brought them over to Astrod Memorial Park and asked them what the possibility of constructing a pickleball court over there were, just to give us some rough ideas. If they did all of the work over there to construct basically four courts, they can, they can do two, four, six or eight is their typical. To do four would be close to $200,000 to take it from the beginning up. If we went ahead and had our public works department do the infrastructure, that would be all doing the leveling, the filling, the general grading of the site and everything, we could probably knock from 20 to $30,000 off of that by doing it in-house. In any case, I asked them just for our own information, Catherine and, and.
This is actually the first I'm hearing of it, so I would have preferred that we had had a selectmen's conversation about it at least. I've also gotten some information from some of the other people about what they're looking to have out there, too.
So. I'm certainly not trying to hide anything. I mean, while I had him in town and getting in. I'm certainly not trying to hide anything, I mean, while I had him in town and getting inquiries, I talk to people every day and I. It's a little difficult to let you know every conversation.
No, I was, I was thinking about in terms of sharing it with the public yet.
Yeah. The general cost that they have. At the figures that they're looking at right now is about a hundred and twenty six thousand, that would be for us doing the base work, but. Just did that to try to get a measure and and be able to tell people that. What the potential financial impact is, and also what the aspects, they would not if if we, and we're certainly not going to consider that right now, but. If we were to give them to go ahead. They're so backlog, and I'm told their competitors are, you probably couldn't start on that till the end of next summer. But anyway, just informational purpose. We had a new guardrail project on Varga Road. We installed more than three hundred feet, it was taken out by a. A hit and run accident that didn't report it to the state police or anything, but. That has been completed this week, it's over three hundred feet of guardrail we had to replace. We have a, an issue that's on our ARPA funding that was approved for resurfacing. Or repaving the entrance of Norton Hall, we can talk about this when we're talking about ARPA. The cost for doing heating elements there have just about become out of sight for us. Recommendations are right now to go with the pavers. And I'll, we'll be talking. The board will be talking more about that. In the next few weeks about, I'd like to at least get the pavers in. If we're going to be doing that, the surface of the entrance there continues to. Degraded and it's getting more and more difficult to. And more and more of a liability with the tripping hazard and everything, so I think we may have to. Redo our plans and that, and I think we can do something that will. Restore the integrity of the safety of it. Probably cut down on some costs if our public works department does some of the work. But as I get more information on that, I'll share that with the board. Information wise, the tree behind Milton Memorial Hall is actually on what we used to refer to as the. White House property. I'm told that should come down. One of its large branches is actually leaning towards Norton Hall. And if that does come down, we're going to have a major issue, so we've got. Costs coming in and we're trying to schedule to do a tree removal plus talking with the tree warden, although it's on private property. I've got, I know Christine Asibo brought up about Katerock, I did get a request in, and I know the board was copied. By Mrs Jenny. On. The potential of utilizing a. A mountain bike trails at Katerock and them going in and doing something work, I did have a. A meeting with her and a person from the organization, she's a member of that does this sort of thing, and also explain that. We're really in a situation right now where we're waiting for the Yale report to come back before we. Bring anything before the town to give active consideration and do anything else. The only other thing, and this has been shared with the the Board of Selectmen, but we put in a. Claim for about thirty thousand dollars for damages that were done as a result of what we consider vandalism at South Cemetery. And we did receive a letter dated July twenty fifth from our insurance carrier, Karma, who is denying that that claim. And I believe the board is going to have to consult with town council to figure out our next step on that. That's all I have for for selectmen's briefing, Catherine, do you want to go ahead with the acceptance of the minutes or? Or would you be more postponed until Rogers here?
Okay, I do have a question about some things, some other things, but I guess I'll. Make sure they're on the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh, you can.
Well, except that we haven't heard about, there was a damage down at the. Ashford Memorial Park.
There was a car that went in there last Sunday, or a truck, would they they assume, it's been reported to the state police. I'm told by DPW that we can bring in a couple of loads of. Topsoil and and probably corrected ourselves, but there was damage down there, since that was done, there's new guardrails have been put up. And there's a new deed on order. Well, it's not on order, actually, we have it in hand. That DPW will be installing to try to secure that better. Whether we could secure it a hundred percent, I don't know.
Right.
State police have issued a file on it, and we've also reported it to Karma.
Okay.
Anything else, Catherine, you want to?
No, I'll, I'll put them on for the next meeting because it's really not part of the update.
Here from boards, commissions, committees. Catherine, one thing about the cemetery committee, I did. Get an inquiry. From the Historical Society, they'd like to do a program of some sort. At the Bevcock Cemetery. And what I'll try to do is put you in, I I. Told them about the cemetery committee, but I'd like a recommendation with the thoughts from the committee for our entire board. We'll fill you in on that, because it's somewhat time sensitive, because I believe they want to do it the second or third week in October.
Oh, in October?
I believe so.
Yeah, there's a little breathing space there. All right, so yeah, if you send the information, then we can, the committee can look it over.
I will. I know Gina came up to see me, she's the new president. Of the Historical Society, and I'll put her in touch with you.
Okay.
From there. Oh. All right. Old business status.
Bill, Bill?
Yes?
I wanted to speak under. The committee number six.
Actually, under persons to be heard?
No. It's concerning the Trumco committee.
That's not the. Oh, okay, thank you, thank you.
You can do, you can do that.
Bill, who's on the Trumco committee?
Chuck Funk, Mike Gardner.
Thanks for refreshing my memory.
Ex officio and Joan Bowley.
Thank you, I forgot that we had a formal committee.
It's an ad hoc committee that's been meeting for several months now.
Yep.
Go ahead, Joan.
Okay.
The, the reason I didn't call on you about this, Joan, was I thought we might be discussing that through ARPA, but if you'd like to report that through the committee. Line on him on the agenda, you can go ahead and do that.
Yes, I I thought I'd do it ahead of time.
Okay.
Bill. We did a walkthrough. On July twelfth of the property, the Trumco property. There was Bill and Chuck and Mike and myself. And. Chuck and. Mike did a little more extensive down the basement, Bill and I didn't go down the basement. And and then we had another meeting. August seventh. I'm sorry, August second. And at that meeting, Chuck was there, Mike Gardner was there, Bob Heard was there. Bill was there and myself. We were mainly talking about. And we have been concerned about the. Structure of the building and the load bearing of the. The floors. Bob Heard did mention that. The, the main concern would be the main floor with the load bearing. And but we were looking at the ceiling of the second floor because this little house has been. The beams have been sistered over a period of time. Probably even before when the Trumcos owned it. But. We were concerned about a couple of problems. And we were then. We thought we'd take it, the, our recommendations and mention, they asked me to present it because Chuck wasn't around and. They asked if I would present it to the board, our recommendations. There's two oil tanks in the basement. And two boilers that need to come out. And. Bill mentioned the possibility of nutmeg oil. Taken those out, he was going to contact them, I don't know if you heard from them Friday, Bill, or no?
I I have spoken to them, they were going to try to get out Thursday or Friday, they have not had an opportunity, but.
Okay.
The fellow that does that for him is due back in the office tomorrow morning, I did call this morning also. And hopefully, they'll be in touch either tomorrow or Wednesday.
So that, that was one of our concerns.
One of the challenges with that, Catherine, and I think you've been down there, but there's no hatchway or anything to get down there.
No, I saw them.
What, what, what they're going to have to do is actually dismantle or cut.
Yeah.
Those units up and bring it up the staircase, so.
Right.
We, we could have our DPW. Take a look at that, in fact, I've had Casey take a look at it. But there are environmental concerns and safety concerns, I'd rather have a professional that's fully insured for that sort of thing. So as soon as we get a price from Nutmeg, I'll certainly share that with everybody.
And the other, another issue was the B one hundred. And soil tests need to be done pertaining to a new septic system. Which would be for two buildings, not just the one building, it'd be for the little red building that. Was the post office as well as the Trumco house. And Bill is, has been looking into the B one hundred. And also the soil testing, right, Bill?
That's correct.
Okay. The other one was mainly the structural engineering and. Bob Heard has a structural engineer that works with him, her name is Beth. Last name is A C L Y. I've met her years ago, and she. Needs to analyze the structure. With Bob Heard. And we may have a third person that may do three D scanning also, which may help. But these are, these are not options, these are recommendations that have to be completed because we feel, because like Bill was saying, because of safety and the environmental issues. And it's near the Mount Hope River, of course. The recommendations we would. Ask for would be from ARPA money, and it would be about twenty thousand. Part of that, about half of it would be for the architectural. Engineer with Bob Heard, and the other part would be. To take care of any estimates on what we have to do with the tanks and everything else that I just mentioned. I'm sorry, Bill was there, so he, he understands too.
Actually, I also went down there. So I was just going to ask, when you said the rest of the twenty thousand would be for what?
Well, she said estimates, I believe she meant remediation.
Remediation.
Remediation, and that's what I was asking, remediation.
The oil tank, remove all the. Soil tests. Anything, we don't, we don't know, those are just estimates, and Bill would get the figures.
Catherine, the oil tanks that you saw, the two boilers, the furnaces that are down there.
Actually, actually, what I did was I took pictures and soil samples from under those oil tanks. And pictures of. Other degradation in the building, including all the mold, I don't know about you, but I wore a mask and gloves.
We went in with a mask, Bill.
We all did.
Yeah. As far as the mole and we saw the mole too, Catherine, and we mentioned it to Bob Heard, and he said, well. He said the house has been shut up with, which we all know, there's no, been no ventilation, but that, he wasn't concerned about that because. The walls will be taken down, they have to be replaced, so.
So what if I, if I, yeah, if I understand correctly.
Yeah.
What you're saying is that the oil tanks need to be disassembled, do we know if there's anything in them?
No, that's what Nutmeg is going to ascertain, it's been so long, they said minimum, they've got to guess there's sludge in the bottom, but. They've got to go, and and they have a testing ability to find out what and how much is in there.
Yeah, we also have water leakage that goes down in there through the stones. Down into the basement.
Well, that would be one of the.
There's gaps in the stones.
To address, you know, down the road, I guess.
That's the foundation, so.
Yes.
All right, thank you for the information.
Thank you. Any other questions? Bill, you've got any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the status of the Astrid School Program. We're still focusing on. A September fifth kickoff. I I was unable to make it, but Catherine, you might want to mention, we, there were three applicants who were interviewed.
Yes, we interviewed three applicants and all of them, in a general sense, passed muster. They need some additional training, two of them need to be vetted. I'm not going to get into the names or anything of the the candidates, because that's not appropriate at this time. We, we feel that the superintendent should act as the lead. Until we've are able to determine. Which of the three candidates, actually, there's, which of the three candidates would be appropriate for lead? So remember, there's three positions, there's lead, assistant lead, and helper. So we think we got the helper nailed down, it's on the lead that we're having the bigger issue with. But the superintendent Cindy is, she's pretty terrific, because what she said is that she will be working with them directly with them. Should we hire them? And she will access the lead and be there for as long as it takes to make sure we have a. A good lead in place, and we have the assistant lead named. The, I think the big thing was that. Well, first of all, they're all very different, they're all, they all have experience in their own right, and I think the combination of the three would be very good. The questions that were asked were pretty insightful, and these people were up to the challenge. The, I think the big thing is that we have a time constraint in getting them hired. Or actually extending offers and getting them hired, then getting them vetted and trained. And September fifth is rolling up real quick, and the training and everything is not going to be short. In addition, we need to make sure the policies, I'm sorry, the procedures that they need to follow are laid out, we don't have that at this point in time, what we have is a. A kind of a description of the program. And they should be part of. Looking at what that will be, and they should be part of looking at what the programs themselves will be within. The childcare initiative, because they're going to be, they're going to be managing them. And delivering them, and what materials are needed, etc. So I know, Bill, you've had at least one conversation with Cindy about this. And again, we, I'm sure we'll be talking about. Funding options, are we talking about that through at this point?
Yes.
All right. So, and I know you and I had a brief conversation about that. So I want to find out. For this one, if we have had a conversation with the auditor. Auditors about what's appropriate for funding options at this point in time, since we do have a time constraint.
Do you have an opportunity to read the email I sent you in response to your inquiry today?
Yes, but I thought it would be good to, I asked, oh, actually, no, not my last question of you.
Okay, yeah, I responded, just for the record.
I'll look.
Acceptance of participant applications started on August second. And they will be accepted through August sixteenth. We publicized that in the Citizen. The number of applicants finally chosen will be twenty. And. On August eighteenth. The method of acceptance will be lottery, and it will be by family. So tho- those dates are kind of carved in stone. The program is being offered for K through six graders, it's only for five days per week. We're not anticipating accepting any part. It's uh, only for five days per week. Uh, we're not anticipating accepting any part time. At this time, and it will be one hundred dollars per student. Um, and we've also let it be known that if if there's a financial hardship with a submitter. Um, that will be refer them, referring them to our social service, youth service director. Um, because there is, there are some assistant programs out there.
And to just add to that, Bill, and that the program will run only while. Um, on the days in which classes are actually conducted.
Correct. Correct. Did you find that email?
Just finding it. You said that's the new auditor?
She is, she is our primary uh, point personnel for King and King, is taking the place of Sean.
Okay.
Same firm.
Did you ask her about the possibility of using ARPA funds? To do the reimbursement process? To use for the reimbursement, because that's where I was concerned that we might not be able to do that.
Yeah, I I did not ask her that specifically.
Okay, you might want to roll that one out to them.
All right, um.
Oh, and one more thing. I do agree with the setting up of the separate funds for the program. That was what we talked about before. That would be a lot like what we had, used to have for the recreation fund.
Yeah, I know that, and I've talked to Sherry several times about this. She she refers to it as an activity fund.
Close enough.
Uh, the auditor.
It just, it doesn't look like a line item. That's what it is.
The auditors were more specific calling it a fund, but they didn't object to activity fund, but I think we were all on the same page on that.
Uh, but the bottom line is you're talking about a fund, not necess, we we would have line items for things for this program, but the fund is. Uh, a place where money is drawn from and put into, or I should put it in sequence.
Re- revenues, revenues and dispersments.
Yep, okay.
And and Sherry had sent out, and I think that went to the board. And members of the Board of Finance, um, a draft budget, just line item by line item, on items that.
That we saw that.
Were obvious to us now, so. All right, um, anything else on that?
Uh, no, just uh. I think they're, they're waiting for their go ahead. They're, I think, you know, they're waiting for their go ahead on the hiring so that they can get them going.
Okay, um, consider funding options relating to the initiation of the Ashford uh. Roof project. I think it's still premature. Um, to consider that, there was a walkthrough with contractors, according to state statute today. Cindy tells me that there were five participants that showed up. And uh, the way the statue is written, those um. Who were there and um. Uh, did a walkthrough will be have to submit questions in writing. Um, to the superintendent that they may have, and that those questions will be submitted on then to the bu- building committee. Uh, for their consideration or response prior to them making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for uh. Final awarding of the contract. Ashford Citizen, uh, item C, um, continued review of the um. Establishment of the policies. Catherine, I thank you for working that up again. I did get it about fifteen minutes before the meeting. Had a chance to go through the first several pages I, which I absolutely don't have any problem with. Do you want to go through the highlights? Would you be more, we're waiting for Rogers here?
Um, I already talked to Roger about the highlights. Okay, or about the items that I highlighted. So um, if you look at, I've got the pages numbered.
Thank you.
So what I did was, if a person were to uh. Go for information about our policies and procedures, all of this. Would be put out on the town website and would also be printed up. Uh, and copies kept someplace in Town Hall, whether it's down near where the uh. Extra copies of the Ashford Citizen are kept across from the Town Clerk's Office or wherever. So uh, but this is, this, all of this information would be available to the public by going out to the website or there. So if you look at page one, I laid it out as general policies and what you, the first thing is general policies. And this is the information that would be in the Citizen and is currently basically, for the most part, in the Citizen already. Uh, on page two. So the things that are uh, kind of uh, need to be finalized are. Uh, where I highlighted. Uh, what what I did was I highlighted where I made changes. Okay, so that you, they'd be obvious to you. So you'll see the fourth bullet down is just adding that every Ashford mailbox and P O box would get copy of the cit, would uh. Should have, should receive the Citizen by the first of each month. And then I also added that copies of the Citizen will also be made available in the town, the Ashford Town Offices. And that's because I know that we already put them down in the um, hallway across from Town Clerk's Office. I also have had a conversation with Colleen. And it is her desire that all submissions, instead of being received by the twentieth of each month, that they be received by the fifteenth. The twentieth simply doesn't give her enough time to pull everything together, and I know that. Uh, for Sherry, much it was, it was, you know, all hands on deck trying to deal with last.
We discussed that at the last selectmen's meeting. I agree wholeheartedly with that.
Okay, so I, and then going on down to the uh, next highlighted section, section. Wh- when we talked with county, county council, he had um, added in. Uh. This statement, the go beyond an invitation to a program event or time and place of worship. Uh, I don't think that. We need to have place of worship. I think that go beyond an invitation to a program, event or time and place. And when he was, when he was speaking of that, remember the expression that was used, which is uh, black, white and dry?
I do.
Yeah, yeah, um, this. Kind of contradicts that because it's saying beyond an invitation to a program, event or time and place. I just think we should leave it, just take out the words in place of worship. And just keep the rest of it.
Well, couldn't you leave time in place and just cut out of worship?
That's what I'm saying.
So we're just gonna remove those two words of worship?
That's it.
I have no problem with that.
Place of worship, those three words, yes. Uh, then the statement, readers should be aware that opinions and articles by individual writers or organizations are not necessarily those of the citizen. I think that was elsewhere. And uh, I just made sure it was there, just reworded a bit.
I don't have a problem with that. I think it's fine.
Thank you. Yeah, I tried to really stay true to what was there, so it wouldn't be confusing. And then rolling on down. When we get to publication policies. A publisher refers to Town of Ashford. Those are ones that uh, we were advised would be good to have in there. So I uh, put them in there in their own little section. Still continuing with policies. And then going to procedures on page two. Uh, what I, in talking with Colleen about people who. Don't use email. So they aren't able to send their, their ads the same way as most, at the vast majority can. So I made an exception statement in there. This said, uh, what she agreed to. Is that special arrangements must be made by the thirteenth of the month with the Citizen editor in the event that the submitter does not have access to a computer. That will give her a little more time to deal with the ones that have just come in by hand. And she was happy with that.
I have no problem.
Then going down to procedures for the Citizen editor. Um, the number three item, that's just, uh, I think that's what we had. As I look back at our notes, because we took out um, review by this Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
But we still have the review by the first selectman.
That's fine.
Okay, the calendar for Citizen production. I worked through those dates with Colleen. And as you see, uh, Citizen received by local residents and businesses. By the first or second, that's just to give a little breathing space, you know, ideally it's the first, but I want to manage ex, or we should want to manage expectations. Just in case. And then uh, second to the fifth is a Citizen is is received by out of town subscri- subscribers. Due to the, you know, potential issues with mailings. Does that work for you?
No problem with that at all. I I talked to Colleen about that prior.
Good. Uh. No, uh, going down to the advertising rates, I just took what was published in the last Citizen because I believe they were, we revised them either in a meeting or whatever.
Um, so these. Actually, it it doesn't reflect what was in the last one.
The July Citizen? Oh, no, the August Citizen, you're right.
Yeah.
So what do we have for the rates?
Uh, for the, for the business card per year, it's two twenty.
Oh, that's right. She said you did a a discount. Very good.
What I did was, because historically we gave basically an eight percent. Uh. Give or take a couple of decimals, so I just carried that over, but um. And then for the quarter page, the annual would be three twenty.
Good.
Full page, six sixty.
Full, half page is what?
Excuse me, six sixty.
Six sixty, okay, so um, we still have, uh, the per month numbers are correct. Is that correct, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll make sure those changes go in. Um, and then I had uh. Uh, articles and ad, articles or ads will be published at no charge to to all. At no charge, you should say to all town departments, boards, commissions and committees, including, and I added, but not limited to. Because. My God, do we have to list every single. Department, board, commission and committee? I don't think we do, but I think we gave a good taste of it here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have to.
Yeah, if any, if anything, we didn't need to put any in, but this at least provides some clarification.
We, we had talked about five oh one C threes.
Actually, what we did was we looked at, that's the next section.
Okay.
Okay, and we actually. Did not agree on all five oh one C threes, but.
Yeah, we, we just left it over.
Put the ones, I put the ones in we did agree on.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's where.
Oh, there are, those are the Babcock Library, let's see, Babcock Library, let's see. We had Babcock, Friends of the Babcock Library, we had a half uh, Hungarian Social Club and we had ASCO.
Is there a reason that leads off with half page? I guess that's what threw me off.
I'm sorry?
The, the, the second bullet under.
Oh.
Charge advertising.
Oh, that's right, um. Let me explain that. Do we want? All of these groups to be able to put in, well, all of the articles are, oh, okay. We're putting in either ads or articles. Could be for all of these. Do we anticipate that we're going to have a lot of full page articles so that it expands the, the size and cost of the citizens? Or are we thinking that, you know, these are being published at no charge? That they would be half page articles? And notice, notice that.
The other side of that coin is, do we want to encourage half where if if a a quarter page is gonna be sufficient? Uh, for one of these groups, let them use a quarter page?
Oh, I was, I wasn't thinking that because if the Arts Council, for example, is putting out an ad. They typically have, you know, some kind of a picture and a nice write-up. Clean Energy Task Force puts out information. Historical Society.
Would we want to say articles? Ads and then in parentheses or something put not to exceed one half page?
Okay. That works. I was, yep. One half page, okay. And we may find that they may request an exception. I don't know.
Yeah, and we can.
But I added in.
We can make exceptions.
For the ones that, that were already there in our list, I kept those in the list. There were a couple that moved up to a town. Uh, Commissioner Committee. They were, somewhere were down in the wrong group.
Let me remind you, Catherine, pick your brain a little bit. What would, there was two that came up to mind. And. They work, both of them work awfully hard to attract volunteers that is the pulse of this town.
Who is that? Yes.
The Democratic and the Republican Town Committees.
What about them?
You know, for their functions, if they have a dinner, if they have something they're doing that's not political. Doesn't mention candidates or anything like that, why not them utili- utilize that?
Uh, because those are fundraising opportunities. For their, for theirs, and that's political.
But isn't most of their fundraising to attract volunteers for our numerous.
No, I don't know. I know that the selectmen are trying to attract volunteers into the different groups.
We all are. But there, tho- those, those two committees are the mechanism that we use. For most of our committees with appointments and recommendations. I I just think they're a valuable tool.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, Bill, I'm listening to what you're saying. I'm just trying to take it in, so give me a second, please. So I'm thinking. You know me, I always look at, but try to look at both feet. So the other foot would be, okay, so if we have. A group of unaffiliateds that want to get together to do something, do we have an issue? Personally.
I, I, if they want to, if.
Personally, I would love for us to be able to, you know, the different, other two committees. To be able to say, hey, we are looking for, we're looking for people to run for office. Okay, we're looking for, because those are volunteers.
Or we're looking for whatever their genre is, a Democrat or Republican. Or unaffiliated, we need members on ABC Commission. Please contact our chairman or something along those lines. To me, those are vital things that, that, that keep this town running.
But we already put an ad in that says that, that comes from the selectman's office.
We do, but we need.
And it's non-denominational.
We, we do, but we need as much help as we can get to attract more people. We're. There, there are groups that we're at a critical stage right now. Um, with attracting, and if there's more avenues that we can do that, I think we ought to do it.
So Bill. Bill, we are, again, we already put something out there. It shouldn't be party based. It should just be. That we're looking for people to fill positions in the town. Uh, on various, uh, various boards. And commissions and committees. It's mostly commissions and committees.
Wheth- whether it's. It's right or not, some of those things are statutorily guided by, by. Whether we're talking about minority representation or what it is to be party or unaffiliated based.
Well. At this point, I don't agree. I'm gonna have to, I would have to think more about that.
Well, let's wait.
And, and we don't have Roger, and we don't have Roger to weigh in.
Right, right. I know I just sprung that on you, so let's. Let's go with it how it is, but let's think about that.
All right, well, let me finish with how.
Both of those committees serve a vital role, and I, I don't think there's any of us that would disagree with that.
The um, okay, so let me at least clarify what is in here. I uh, tried to get some of the proper names for these groups so people would know what they, you know, really are. So on these, I, you know, Ashford Arts Council, the Ashford Clean Energy Task Force, not just clean energy. Uh, Historical Society, Housing Authority, Ashford Tullinator Pathway, it's a proper name for the group, ASCO. Ashford School, I didn't know if that belonged up into the, in the other category. Ashford School, I didn't know if that belonged up into the, in the other category. Of Town Departments, Boards, Commissions, Committees. I don't know. Uh, Volunteer Fire Department, Boy Scouts. Friends of the Babcock Library, we added. Hungarian Social Club, we added. Joshua's Trust. And I think we had the last time, and then Veterans Representative. So that people would know what that is. So what you're saying is you're also looking for. Something that the two politi- primary political parties can put in there to say. We need people to fill. These slots. Is that correct?
As, as long as it's not favoring, it, it's an election and it's favoring one or the other candidates. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Just a comment, I, I, I think probably Ashford School would be appropriate up there in the first column.
Thank you, I will move that. Okay. And then. Uh, let me know if there's any others. Then moving along. To the last page, page five.
Can we go? Can you go back to?
Sure.
The list we put into the citizen. With the Board and Commission openings. We put in. What the party affiliation had to be, because a lot of them.
Good.
Falled under minority representation, so you were locked into something.
Okay.
Something.
That seems like the best way to do it. So it sounds like we're already doing what we should be doing. Or what we think will help.
We're, we're doing some, and we are attracting some volunteers, but we need more. And if we can use the arms of the town committee to assist us with that. I'm open to that. And we don't have to make a decision on that tonight.
All right. Yeah, moving to the last page. The last page is a copy. Of the. You know, the first page? Where it says general policies?
Yep.
It's a co- direct copy of that section. And what it has added to it. Is. For, at the bottom, for more information about Ashford Citizen Policies and Procedures, see. And I have a blank there for now. On the Ashford Town Website, or pick up a copy at the Selectman's Office. Actually, it could be town, we can say town offices. I was being specific. Um, so what this would do is. All we need to put in Citizen in the same place that we put things now, which is on page two. Uh, is that little box that has this information in it. Uh, you know, just updated based upon what we've written here. And has that last line in it that says, hey, if you want more information. Here's where you can get it, and that's when they would be able to see everything that's documented in the page, the first four pages. So they have access to it, it's something that if someone. Uh, says, well, I, I don't understand about this, or I, you know, want to know about that, we have the information out there for them and. People don't have to try and answer it on the fly. They can just point them to it, and if there's more questions, then we can take it, take it up differently.
That sounds fine to me, Catherine.
Good, that way we don't have to put a great big thing in the Ashford Citizen. Other than to say.
And, and, and we can do a link to this and put this in on our town webpage, I mean, we're gonna do that with the entire thing anyway.
Exactly. Exactly, so I'll make, I'm gonna make those, um. Cleanup items, do those cleanup items, and I'm gonna send this back to you. Okay? And to Roger. And what are our next steps?
Courier again?
I, you know why I said it by courier, Bill? It's because, because if, if it was printed at the town offices, it'd be printed in black and white.
Yeah.
And because I highlighted yellow, I thought it would be easier.
I, I, I was, I was kidding.
But I do have a really great courier, don't I? Yes, he always does. Okay.
The only other thing I wanted to talk to relating to this. Um, as you know, in our last budget, we had put in a stipend for the editor.
Yes.
Then when the Board of Finance had asked us to make cuts. In general. And we weren't asked by them to be specific. But we said one of those cuts that we could consider. Would be cutting that stipend up.
Correct.
I'd, I'd like to restore that, um. Colleen is.
I would also like to restore that.
Colleen has been tracking her hours. And I think it's more than justified and, and. It's, it's still a big benefit to the town, even if it's gonna cost us a hundred dollars a week. So.
No, it's a hundred dollars a month, it's. Twelve, oh. Was it a hundred dollars a week or a hundred dollars a month?
Fifty, two hundred dollars a year. Is what we had originally recommended. And I think that was his. That was a specific request from the prior editor. That we.
Right. Right, now, we didn't have that on our agenda for tonight to. Approve.
But I, I think it's general enough under discussion about the, the Ashford Citizen, um. Or it's a regular. Meeting, we could add that if you're more comfortable adding a special line.
I, I would like to, I would like to add it, only because, to me, it's good policy that whenever we're intending to spend money that. We're gonna, you know. That we let the public know that we're going to do that. We're gonna make a decision on that.
Do you want to make?
Personally, uh, personally, I think there should be a stipend, I also think that. Um. Uh, we should profusely thanks Sherry much for doing it all, what, twelve years for free?
And we, some of us have been doing that profusely, and I will continue to do it, she still does service to this town, that's appreciated. Including. When she needs it, helping our existing editor through some. Difficult times.
Yes.
Um, do you want to make a motion to add that to the agenda then, uh?
Oh, no, I was gonna, I thought we were going to. Oh, I thought you were talking about adding it to our next meeting. Our next regular meeting, I would rather we did that, so that we're telling the public in advance that we're gonna spend that money.
Okay.
Is there any issue with that? I have no, in all likelihood. There won't be an issue with this, without the three of us selectmen, but I would like to just make sure the public.
I, I just like to get that in place sooner rather than later, to show our appreciation and acknowledge. The work that's been done, but if you want to wait till next Tuesday, the world will not end.
I think, I figured that.
Okay. Update on transfer station, uh, uh, upgrades, a, uh. Our work continues there, I'm told that our, um. New bumper stickers, excuse me. Our, our new transfer stations stickers for the windshields are in the mail, and we'll probably be receiving them before the end of the week. So we'll be doing an article in the upcoming September. Um, we're finalizing all the plans and got signage ordered. Uh, for the instant, uh, installation of the guard station, getting electrical hooked up there. Uh, we're buying a laptop that we, we discussed. Uh, that we're trying to make arrangements with wifi to tie it in. With our computer here in Chris's office. That when they issue a new sticker at the transfer station. When they record it there, we'll also record here, so we're not issuing double statements, and we can track who has them. So who doesn't.
And that, and, and then in first, that Chris will still be able to, uh. Assign stickers if someone should come into town offices.
Ab- absolutely.
Perfect.
All right, um. Ashford Housing Authority Request for ARPA Funds. Um, I think that that is a little further down in the agenda, but. Unless I'm mistaken right now, we're at. Give me a second. Think they revised their amounts, and Chris, why aren't I finding it here?
Yeah, I'm not seeing it either.
I believe the Housing Authority Development Corp, uh, adjusted their amount to twenty thousand. Seven oh nine. From the original. What was it, sixty two thousand or? Something like that. Or seventy five thousand. Um, I don't think we have to take action on that, we can discuss that when we get down to ARPA funding potentials. Unless there's objection to that.
No.
Hearing none, item F, Discuss And or Act on Asmi. Uh, Contract. Um, we're going to have our renegotiation start. And it's scheduled, I think everybody agreed, we can make it on the twenty fifth. At ten o'clock here in the office.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
Typically, we don't put our responses, uh, the wording, the exact wording that's gonna go into the. Um. Contract, should they be accepted, we don't put them all in caps, it's actually kind of hard for me to read. Um, we normally put it just the way it would be printed. If it were copy pasted into the contract. I'm just curious as to why it ended up in caps.
Cause I typed it.
Okay. You type all in caps, looks like you're shouting.
Maybe I was, no, I wasn't shouting. Uh, we will make sure when it gets. Transcribed into the contract, it's like all the others are written out. I don't think I'm, did, did, well, we can go over this, we're gonna meet prior to our, our meeting on.
Yes, we'll meet prior to.
I think I captured the, our intent on everything. All right. Item eight, under new businesses, discuss and or act on scheduling a special town meeting. To seek approval for the following, first bullet, approval of the rev- revisions. To the Ashford Ordinance Governing Dairy Farm and Orchard Tax Abatements. Um, Lynn was unable to come tonight. But she is going to join us at our Tuesday meeting. Um. I don't have any problem with supporting her recommendations, who were also Kara's recommendations, but. Um. Chris, wha- what is our timeline if we're gonna be scheduling a time? Town meeting? You're muted, oh.
Okay, what? I'm sorry.
What is our timeline if we're going to? Be scheduling, uh, assuming the Board of. Uh, Finance goes along with it, um. Scheduling our next town meeting.
Board of Finance meets August tenth.
That's this week, Thursday.
And. You need the after school childcare program. Recommendation. From them. Before we can do a legal notice. We'd have to talk to Colleen and find out. Because it's tight. It's gonna be tight to get it into the. September citizen. If she needs it by the fifteenth, then we don't.
So we don't have a recommendation right now on a, on, on a potential town meeting date? I thought you and Sherry worked out dates.
We worked out possibilities, but it's all dependent on the Board of Finance.
Everything is dependent on them, but I thought, assuming they're gonna give their approval. Um. Or acknowledge us to do that, I thought we had a date we were focusing in on.
Just a second.
And I'm assuming that day would also be the same town meeting. That we would be looking for approval. From a town meeting for ARPA funding.
That was the intention, just give me a minute.
Yep. And we, while you're doing that, I'm gonna take a short break, Catherine, if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I gotta hit the men's room.
Okay.
Be right back.
I'm gonna go ahead and pause the recording.
Thank you.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thanks, John.
Okay, so what Sherry and I came up with. Was that the Board of Selectmen has to, um. Act on a recommendation to the Board of Finance. To appropriate some amount, we have no amount. At this point to appropriate. To ask them to appropriate.
For the after school program.
For. The after school program.
Okay, we're gonna work on that tonight.
All right, so. They have to vote to recommend date for a special town meeting. For approval to allocate the funds. They have to do that on the tenth. They have to get me. Their. Minutes, their approval, their motion, who made the motion, yada, yada, yada. By Friday, the eleventh. So I can get a legal notice into the Chronicle. For publication either on Monday, August fourteenth. Or Tuesday, August fifteenth. That's all dependent on when the Chronicle can. Do the notice. Or get the notice in the paper. We're figuring best case scenario will probably be the fifteenth, Tuesday, the fifteenth. Which means. That the town meeting. Would have to be August twenty second.
Okay, um, can I take you back to the very first item there? I don't have that thing in front of me. Um. The. So this after school program, the Board of Selectmen would have to approve the money. At tonight's meeting, is that correct?
Right. For the Board of Finance to consider it on Thursday.
Right, so, and Bill, you're thinking. If I understand correctly, that we're going to. When all is said and done. The money is going to ultimately. Be reimbursed through ARPA, correct?
Well. I, I have a, a couple of.
I just want to make sure we don't overextend ourselves here, that's all.
I got a, I got a couple of thoughts on that, I. We need a Board of Finance approval to go to town meeting. Historically, we have not gone to them for approval. To go to town meeting for ARPA funds.
Correct, we shouldn't have to.
I don't believe, we, I believe we got legal counsel on that a long time ago, that. Those are grant funds that we did not need to go. Take that.
We also, we also don't need to go to them if we decide that we want to take. Monies out of the general government budget. We would only inform them, but we don't need their permission to do it.
If, if we can identify line items, which I think we could in, in a crunch. That we have.
And.
Is right now, the, the only thing that I think we would need. Approval from the Board of Finance this coming Thursday. Would be. Um. To call, to, to approve. The designation of a. A department designation. For the Ash- Ashford School Program.
Right.
And, and.
And the setting up of the fund.
And allow us to set up the fund with appropriate. Revenue and disbursement line items.
So yes, so again, department.
I don't think. Because we're using ARPA funds for that, that we need approval from the Board of Finance. For monies for that program.
If we were to use ARPA funds, so, you know, we've got, we've got options, if I understood correctly. From what I read earlier today. The initial thought is to use, we, we need to get the program started. And, uh, we need to have funds to work with right away. So the thought was to use, if, if I got what you sent me, Bill, correct, was to use funds. From the. Board of Education. To do the initial setup. And then to reimburse them. From some source. And the two sources that would be generally available. Uh, well, there's three. One would be. To take monies from. Use monies from part time salaries, et cetera, in our general government budget.
Or just a, a general, our, our salary line items.
Salary line items, okay, so that's one, another one was ARPA. And another one would be to ask the board of finance for funds from the undesignedated fund. So there's three options.
Yeah, that would be my last choice.
I know, we don't like doing that. So, but if I understand correctly, that's what we're talking about reimbursing the school from. But the bottom line at this point in time, or what's. Seems to be, is that the board of ed. Is willing to ante up the funds. In a sense temporarily, but we must reimburse them somehow.
They, and I, as I put in, in writing, and I just saw everybody else is somewhat aware of what we're talking about. And I put in writing to you and Roger and.
Yeah.
Barry and several other people. The auditor said. That. In order to expedite, which we've already started. Background checks on two of the candidates. And to start setting, signing them up for required. Um, training CPR and. That, that sort of training that we needed. The board of ed will, will pay for those. Document them that they're strictly for the af- after school program. And then submit them once we get our funds set up. Uh, for reimbursement and the auditors were comfortable with that. They said that. They do that in, in several towns.
All right, so my question then is. It's one thing to have a conversation with the superintendent about where we think we could, you know, where funds could be used from their budget temporarily. Do we have board of finance, I'm, I'm sorry, board of that approval? To use funds from their budget.
I did not ask her that. I assume she's been keeping the chairman informed. I can ask her that tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't think the chairman can make the decision. I think the board has to make the decision.
Realistically, we're talking about fifty dollars a piece for the background checks. And they're already conducting these CPR and, and other training. For incoming teachers, so I don't even know if there's a dollar amount attributable. If it's done either by class or by individual. So we're talking two or three hundred dollars probably here maximum. By the board at this time.
By the board, but they should make a decision. Okay, um, and then there will be more that will be needed.
Well, don't forget effective. When, when the day of the lottery. Payments will be expected to come in immediately, which will be. On August eighteenth or shortly thereafter.
Okay.
Will be collected by the school. Immediately delivered to our, um, finance office. And in theory deposited into the fund. So we will have a, uh, uh, before this program kicks off on the fifth of September. We're going to have a working capital in that fund already.
All right. It'll be interesting to see how much we have at that point in time, but, um, we also need to train.
Is if we don't have that monies and can't guarantee an enrollment of twenty. It's a new ballgame.
Bill, I, Bill, I know that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just making sure that when we go through the steps for this, that we've done them in a, a fashion that. Makes sense. The, uh, and making sure that, uh, we're not doing something where it's just one person over at the school. Or two people over at the school saying, oh yeah, it's okay to use money from their fund. When in fact, they need to have the board of, uh, board of, uh, Ed weigh in. And we've seen some other issues in the past where we didn't have that.
They have a meeting scheduled Thursday, and I will absolutely take this with Cindy tomorrow.
And that's why I mentioned it. Is it this Thursday or? I don't think it's this Thursday. Is it the following Thursday?
This Thursday, I believe.
Uh, usually we have, we have a, if I understood correctly, I thought we had a board of finance meeting this Thursday.
We do.
Usually they're on opposite Thursdays. That's why I mentioned it.
No. Unfortunately, too often they're on the same night.
Actually, they were trying to make sure their schedule was not doing that this year. So let me just do a quick check.
Didn't work out.
Okay, so they both have. Meetings the same night. So they can get board of, board of ad approval. Thursday. We can get board of finance approval for setting up the fund and the line items. Uh, that, uh, both revenue and expense. That support this, right?
Right.
Okay.
And being that the town meeting is going to address. Just ARPA funds. In general, and I know. For appropriate funds. The only funds that are going to be addressed at the town meeting, correctly, and I'm wrong. Are those recommendations that the board of selectmen makes for ARPA funding potential.
Yeah.
So. Technically. We don't even need board of finance approval to set up. This town meeting. We're going to ask for it, and I think it's important. We're all on the, the same page, but by statute. Because there's no appropriation from. Town funds. I don't believe we need their.
Right. Well, remember I gave those three options and the only one that we would ever, we would, we would need them for was if we were trying to get it from the undesignedated fund, which we're not. So. That's, uh.
So as we said from the beginning, you said, I've said, we've all said. It's a very, very tight schedule, but. As tight as it is, I think it's doable and.
Oh, I didn't say it was doable. I'm just trying to make sure we. You know, dot our i's and cross our t's while we're doing it.
You didn't say it was undoable, you mean?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say it was not possible.
Okay.
Okay, it's just a little sketchy here. The, um. And like you said, we'll have some revenue coming in. Uh, from the parents' payments. All right, so. What is the amount? Uh, hang on a second. Just want to try to think of this. So the special town meeting notice. Is really. When it comes to the startup program or the Ashford's School Childcare Program is only.
To approve the ARPA funds.
Um, to approve our funds, if we're using our funds. Which we don't know that we are yet.
Well, I, I think under the designation that, and we've. Finance several other things of. Municipal services. This. Quite obviously fits into that category.
So that, I guess the thing. That's a little confusing or whatever, might not be quite right. Is when we use ARPA funds. We don't expect to reimburse them, get them reimbursed. I'm probably not saying that correctly.
No, I know you're.
We're saying, we're saying we want to borrow ARPA funds to get the program going. But then we're going to be able to basically give that money back because we're getting. Because people are paying for the service.
I, I think the term give it back is probably not one that. I'm real comfortable with. We may.
That's why.
Be able to reutilize it in a different direction. If we don't need it, and I, I don't think we're going to need it. I think. Money's going to be coming in effective the eighteenth of the month. I, I think that's going to cover all of our expenses and more.
Okay. So. We're not really. Putting the ARPA fund thing in the. Town meeting.
I would put the ARPA thing in there. For the town meeting. And, and, and let, we'll, we'll let them know what our intent is, that this is going to be a self sufficient program. But we're looking for seed money that we may not have to utilize either. All of it or, or, or a good portion of it. And if that's the case, we will then have it. Available for re designation.
I'm just thinking how you do a proviso like that. Saying. Uh, we want, we want you, the town, to approve us using ARPA funds to the tune of whatever. For the school program. And should it not be used for that, we want to use it. Want to re. Whatever.
Redesignate it.
Yeah, let's make sure, yes. I think, I think they, they can't really vote on redesignating it. They're really voting on using it. So.
They, they vote on redesign. They vote on us having the ability to utilize. If we don't use it, then we bring it back to town. And then we can redesignate it and ask for town authority to do so.
Okay. I'll go with that. I just want to make sure we don't screw it up. And, and. I'm trying to think if we've already done this once. I think we did. For the fire department. Something where we got approval. To use ARPA funds for something and they came back. And asked for it to be used in a different fashion. Just trying to remember what that was. We don't have any.
For the split units, Paul is here and Rob. We just gave a certain amount and we didn't utilize it, but we found. That the generator had to be upgraded to accommodate. Am I right on that?
Right.
The circuit had to be added to.
Just speak up so they can.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so what happened was when they did the split unit up, um, updates. They discovered that the splits were not on the generator side, so we used the funds. But we asked to use the remaining funds to take care of that electrical issue with it, so that they would be on the generator power supply.
Yeah, it makes, it makes sense. I'm just, Bill, how did we, how did we handle that? Did we just, the selectmen just say yes?
We did.
I think so.
Cause we did. They, they both had to do with HVAC upgrades and, and.
Okay, the same category.
I believe it was the same category.
Okay, so this, this one is a little different because it's not going to be the same category. No matter what it is. Okay, the other was easier to explain. Uh, when we have to do reporting for what we use our ARPA funds for. So. And, you know, when they were approved.
And, and again, I, I think it, it falls within that. Term that they came up and I, what was it? The final judgment or whatever the. The final amendment or whatever it was. They came up with that term general service of, general municipal services. And that encompassed a whole lot of things. That's how. I remember the first one I heard that from was the, the town manager in Wyndham. Cause he went out, bought three cruisers and a fire and an ambulance. Um, they made that term general enough that encompassed a whole different realm of things that. All of us were anticipating was going to be covered or not.
Well, I hope they did it properly.
Well.
If we're relying on what they did.
They, they in a number, they, they were the first I heard about, but.
Okay.
Including.
All right, I get that. I get the. Yeah, I get the idea.
Okay.
The, um. Okay, so. So then, then what are we, okay, so. That's kind of a given. So this is all about scheduling a special town meeting. And so the next bullet. Are we moving on to the next bullet about what consideration of the allocation of additional ARPA funding items is?
Yeah, unless you'd like to move that till Tuesday, it's going to be.
I'd rather move that till Tuesday. I'd rather have, uh.
Roger.
Some more time to look at it and also to have Roger look at it.
Be honest with you. I know I sent Chris one, an update I did on the. On the seventeenth, and I've added several since then. Paul is here, um, if we.
I've had one, I have one that stated the twelfth of July.
That's the one, yeah, and then like I did some upgrade, updates today based on some other meetings I've had. I've also delineated things that I had on my original list. That I think. Are out of the question for ARPA funds and more along the lines of getting a jump on the CNR proposals for this coming year. But, uh.
So. Also. We don't know how much money we've got and how much has been spent.
It's a, it's a moving target. I know. Chris has been working her buns off here and she ain't got much funds left. But, um. The last I knew, we were at. Two hundred and fifty nine thousand. Excuse me, two hundred and fifty six thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. Was that the last one?
Yes, that's what we've actually committed to spend. That's the balance. After all the commitments we've made. We've actually.
Again, Catherine, that has not been audited. I know Chris has been trying to work with the corner office, finance office. I think that's, that's pretty close, but I, I can't say that that's, that's golden.
Okay, so what I'd be looking for is what have we actually spent? What is committed? And then what is remaining? And I know that sounds oversimplified. But that would give us. You know, a better sense of what we really have.
Did I not give you that last week?
I think you sent out that your last draft. I may be mistaken on the.
Let me see.
Seven twenty five.
Yeah. Seven twenty five. Let me take a quick look here.
As of seven twenty five. We have.
Two fifty six.
Six hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and eighty five dollars.
Six hundred and what? Nine thousand?
Six, six oh nine, two eight five.
Thank you.
All right, we've approved and not yet spent.
Yeah.
Two fifty eight, six twenty five.
And that's, that's broken out on the sheet. She said, Chris, maybe you can resend that in case I got lost in the. And then in process, there's an additional one thirty four, six fifty eight.
Right, and that stuff, that's in process. That's the radios. For public works and the fire department. Paul has a balance in medical equipment that he's going to be spending. So that makes up the one thirty four.
So that one thirty four. Is what's, it's approved and not spent. That part, that's part of, is that part of the two hundred and fifty eight thousand, six twenty five, or is that in addition?
That's separate.
In addition. That's been contracted for.
Right.
Those monies.
We have spent or committed. One million. Two thousand, five sixty eight.
One million, two hundred thousand.
No, one million, two thousand. One, zero, zero, two. Five, six, eight.
Thank you. So this is spent and committed.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
And actually it's, it's spent and. Remaining committed, remaining that's been committed. Okay, thank you.
And some of the things that. May come, you know, may come in under budget.
Yeah.
So there could be extra cash floating around, but we won't know that.
Okay. So yeah, Bill, I'd, um. I'd rather that we went over these next Tuesday. Is that a problem?
I, I, I think. All we need now. And I agree. But I think all we need tonight. Is a motion from our board. Requesting that the board of finance. Set up the line department designations for the preparation of a fund. For the Ashford School. Uh, for the Ashford School.
After school.
After school program.
Okay, so setting up. A fund. And associated line items.
Yes.
So the fund is its own animal. And the line items are to go in the budget, like to be used in the budget.
Correct. Under, under, uh, revenues and dispersments.
And. And. Refresh my memory, please. Did. Sherry give us a. Uh. What those would be?
She gave us, I asked her to do up a draft budget. And we sent that off to you. It showed actual expenditures. Anticipate including all the salaries for the year of thirty-eight thousand. Um, seven sixty-two. And with a revenue estimate of fifty thousand.
So I think we should use that, um, as. Uh, unless it's already been shared with the Board of Finance, as an illustration. Of what the line items would be.
I have shared that with, with the chairman a- as well as John Kopeck.
Okay. Okay, he's the, he's the clerk now.
He's the clerk and for Thursday, he'll be acting chair.
Okay. Um. Okay, so. I would like to make that motion. Just trying to figure out how to word it. Unless, unless Chris has something clever there.
You got it, Chris?
Uh. This, uh, um. A motion and it's not an appropriation. It is a request.
You're moving recommendation to the Board of Finance. To set up a revenue. Disbursement fund. For the after-school childcare program. And. Is that part of? The associated line items are gonna be in the budget, right?
Right, so the fund is its own animal.
Right.
And then the line items are for, really for tracking.
Within the fund or within the regular general government budget?
Within the.
I was. Yeah, and I was thinking it was within the general government budget, but when you talk to the auditor, did they say it was with, for the fund?
Yes.
Okay. Chris, does that make sense to you based upon what we've done with funds before?
Yes, it makes more sense than.
Yeah, in the general government budget, I. Yeah, I agree. Okay, so.
Within the fund.
Yeah. Then what would? What would, um. Sherry be doing? She'll be recording it. Does she have the fund in the system?
Gary, our Sherry.
Yeah, our treasurer.
Once she gets. Authorization from the Board of Finance, she will proceed to set up those funds. She has in theory, I mean, she's got this already in her software. But it cannot become official until we have, I believe until we have authorization from the Board of Finance.
And you're sure that she's got it kind of set up as a dump. I'm, I'm gonna call it a dummy fund right now.
She actually called it a, uh, an activity fund.
Fund, activity fund, yeah.
But the, the auditor kept referring, just call it a fund.
Yeah, I wouldn't. I wouldn't call it an activity fund. I would call it the, uh, Ashford Childcare.
After school.
Program. Fund. If you want to throw activity fund on that, that's fine. Uh. Alright, I'd like to make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Can I go over it again once before?
Yeah, that would be good. That would be good before he jumps in there.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're asking the Board of Finance. To approve the establishment. Of a.
Ashford.
Our, whatever it is, Ashford After School. Childcare, whatever program.
Uh, after-school childcare. Program.
What if I?
Activity front.
What if Finance to approve establishment? Of. Ashford After School Activity Fund. Containing revenue and expenditure line items.
Yes.
Accounted for within the fund.
Perfect.
Um. Friendly amendment, I would add the word appropriate. Revenue. And dispersment. Line items.
Revenue and expenditure. Line items.
Dispersment, six, yeah.
I forget what we call it when we're looking at the, uh. Audit. When they show them.
Expenditures.
Chris, are you comfortable with what you've got for the information?
What if Finance to approve the establishment? Of the Ashford School blah, blah, blah Activity Fund. Containing revenue and expenditure line items. To be accounted for within the fund. Appropriate. Appropriate revenue and expenditure items. To be accounted for within the fund.
Perfect. You're always so helpful with these.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, senior probably saying aye, aye. Thank you.
That moves on.
I have, I have a question.
Yeah.
What do you want to look at since we're not? Asking for money. We're not asking the Board of Finance to do anything about the childcare program as far as cash.
No. We're not.
For a town meeting, cause we're gonna have to figure backwards from when it can get in the paper.
Well, we still need a town meeting.
You're not gonna act on it till the fifteenth. So. If Sherry and I can work it and get it to the Chronicle on the sixteenth. We can hope for a publication date of the eighteenth, maybe. And then. One, two, three, four, five.
We don't, we don't.
A town meeting. Cannot be before the twenty-third. Of August.
So, so we're not, when we talk to the Board of Finance, we're not asking them for, to do anything substantial fund. That doesn't go before the.
Not if you're just doing ARPA funding.
We haven't, we're not. Talking about the ARPA funding yet.
No, but the town meeting, the town meeting will only be necessitated. I mean, we're gonna let the town.
If we don't have revenue coming in.
But it will be only necessitated to get approval for the ARPA funding. As recommended by the Board of Selectmen. It's, it, it doesn't need, we haven't historically. Got approval from the Board of Finance for those funds.
Right. So we don't. We don't need to.
No, if you have a town meeting on the twenty-third, you'll have funds on the twenty, you can draw funds. Presumably on the twenty-fourth. If the town meeting approves use of the funds.
I don't see that being a problem. I was hoping to get it done sooner, but I don't see that being a problem. The twenty-third.
You might be able to. It depends on when the Chronicle can get it in the paper.
Well, maybe you can double check that tomorrow, assuming. Um, we don't even need Board of Finance. Of course, if they say no, we're not gonna let you set up a department or a fund. Then we're.
You'll know in time, you'll know in time.
Ball boards.
Right, you're also not gonna have a list of what you're proposing. Until the fifteenth.
We're gonna have that next Tuesday. Is that the fifteenth?
Right.
Alright, well, let's go with that.
So when it comes to. The town meeting. It's really. Well, one, it's about the revisions, the Ashford ordinance for the dairy farm and.
Right.
Orchard tax. And then it's for. Any ARPA. Appropriations, or are you just really, I, I know you're trying to push for getting. The list of ARPA appropriations, what finalized next Tuesday?
Well, it, it, it. I wanna have, I'm hoping that we. We reach consensus on at least some of the items that we know are coming up that have to be addressed.
Okay.
Whether we wrap them all up, I, I, I'll be surprised if we do that, cause. That two hundred and fifty-six thousand still is a moving target to me.
I know, I'm not comfortable with it at all, so.
So, I, you know.
I just don't want to get short.
Right.
Okay, so. Let me rephrase then. So these three bullets you have on the agenda. The approval of the ordinance changes. The, uh, for the town meeting. The appropriation. For any ARPA items and one of them would be for the startup funding. Possibly.
Right.
And, uh, and any other ARPA items, so. The motion that we need. Do we need a motion tonight to do? I'm sorry, not tonight. We need to.
You need a motion on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth.
Have your list.
And, but the thing is, we're, uh. And we don't need to go to the Board of Finance for a town meeting.
Right.
So for this, because it's all ARPA. Okay, so. Does that cha- that changes our announcement? To be that. Next month, next week's meeting is what day? Fifteenth? Tuesday, but what day is it? Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Tuesdays, the fifteenth.
I'm sorry, the fifteenth.
Yep.
So at that point.
Doing is you're taking out the second bullet.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yep.
And then. Tuesday, I just need to look at the calendar. Get myself oriented again. Wednesday is the fif- I'm sorry. Fifteenth is Tuesday. You need the notice for the fifteenth. Is that correct? Is that what you have for a date? That we had to do the notice? For the fifteenth?
Sixteenth.
If I can get the notice in on the morning of the sixteenth.
Okay, morning, sixteen, good, it's good.
I can see if the Chronicle will put it in on Friday, the eighteenth.
Perfect, okay, I get it.
But I, I can't, can't guarantee it. Depends on when they set the pages.
Alright. Okay. And then, and will they be able to tell us? Once you submit it?
Yeah. They should be able to. It's gonna depend on the length.
Yeah.
And whether they have enough space for.
Okay, our second bullet there. I know we just labored over getting a, a motion done. That's contingent. Of us setting up a department. On getting town meeting of approval to designate ARPA funds to that cause. Do we need that? Caveat in that motion?
No, you're gonna have to come up with a motion for the Board of Finance. To set up the fund.
Yep, with no money, no money involved in that picture.
Right.
Just setting up the fund.
Plotted on the town meeting approving designation of ARPA funds.
No.
Your school program.
Nope.
No.
Because, no, not, well, I don't think so, Bill. What you're doing is you're asking the Board of Finance to do the, uh, what's the word I wanna use?
Mechanism.
Create the mechanism.
Right.
You're not asking them to fund anything. You're just creating a mechanism. And.
In order for us, when we get the funding in place.
To be able to work with it.
Set it up, okay. Alright.
Okay, so when it comes to the ARPA requests, they're just, you know, the school thing is just part of it. Of what we're looking at. And you don't need that information. Uh. I, well, let me ask you one more question. Sorry. What is the urgency on the town meeting? What is the true urgency if we think we're gonna have the funds?
To get this in place. And have the mechanism set up. For us to start paying payrolls and everything. On or before the fifth of September.
So if the school is letting us use money.
There's not an unlimited resource. What I talked to Cindy about. Was the training and. The background checks.
Yeah, that's what I talked to her about too.
When are you gonna start collecting tuition?
The fifteen.
They ask the eighteenth or the eighteenth, when the lottery's taking place.
So you need.
Immediately.
You need a place to put it, and that's what the Board of Finance is all about. So that's, gets accomplished with the Board of Finance. We then start collecting. And any monies that come in are going into that bucket. Which has already been set up as a dummy situation. And. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand the urgency of the. Town meeting. Regarding ARPA funds.
Well, I don't, I.
Cause we don't know.
What, what did you say? The twenty-third, Chris? For town meeting?
Yeah, twenty-third.
How long we get it in the paper? Yeah, the twenty-third.
I, I certainly. Not comfortable pushing it off any further than that, if we can avoid that.
So what you're saying.
Okay, if there's no urgency. Then we can save advertising money and. Put it in the. Citizen.
Right. That's what I was thinking. Bill, um, I think. Let me see if I got this right. I think you're thinking that there's urgency. In case we don't have. Money to cov- coming in that will cover. Those first few weeks of. Yeah, aside from the training business, everything, the first few weeks of payments. Let me stop that for a second. The people that. You know, should we be successful in hiring these people? What would their start date be? Would it be? While they're, you know, that they're, they're getting paid while they're getting trained?
One of them is not gonna be back from her vacation until.
That I know.
Second or third of September, so we don't have to worry about that one.
Well, she needs to be trained, um, ultimately.
One of the, one of the remaining two is already trained and has a background check.
Right, plus we have a superintendent who's trained.
So it's one individual.
Alright, so.
I would think, start, I, I. Don't hold me to it, but it seemed to me the training begins. Either the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth of November, of August.
Uh, I was thinking she'd want to, to start it earlier than that, but, um. Anyway, we will have funds coming in. And so that's why I was trying to understand the urgency of the. Asking for the full ARPA, uh, for a full. Amount for the ARPA.
Well, I never said full amount.
Okay, well, let, let me take out the word. Full amount.
Okay.
Okay.
For, for our comfort levels. What I was thinking of recommending to the board is that we appropriate fifteen or twenty thousand. To have as seed money. That we could either. Spend or not spend like we haven't spent on some other projects that we're trying to get done. And either redesignate it for. New designation, or at least to have the seed money in place.
Can I ask a stupid question, maybe?
Join the crew.
Can you? Use money in conti- from contingency?
That's what I had asked originally.
Can, but you need Board of Finance approval and we've tried over the years to avoid doing that.
Yeah, that's if you're, you need Board of Finance approval to use money from contingency? We've never done that.
I'm sorry, I was thinking, I. We're, we're overthinking this thing now. I was thinking of on-designated fund balance.
No, no, it's contingency we have control over.
And it's part of the general government project.
Yes. We have control over it and.
Trying to wrap up union negotiations on the twenty-fifth. If we can. And, and we'll be dipping into that contingency for a yet undetermined amount. My head's starting to hurt on this. Let's, let's.
I know, I know it probably is. Um, I just don't see the.
Got a plan and I think we're overthinking it right now, but. Why don't we, we're gonna be discussing this on, on Tuesday anyway.
Tuesday? Okay, so on Tuesday, what that changes, Chris, is a bit of your.[1785.15] Tuesday, okay, so on Tuesday, what that changes, Chris, is a bit of your, perhaps a bit of your timeline. We'd have to have the notice, like you said, ready to. Get, if you're try, if you're really urgently trying to get to a, uh, where was it, August? Twenty-third, not twenty-third, August something date for a town meeting, August twenty-fifth. Yeah. Okay, so we can let our brains rest a little bit, and we'll take this up again as to. How we're doing the startup for the school. So I made a motion. For setting up.
I think, I think it was voted on already.
Yeah, we voted, we voted on the, um, Board of Finance, we did a recommendation for the Board of Finance to set up the, the fund for. The Activity Fund, if you will, for the program.
Correct.
Which is, has nobody involved in that. So, again, I'm not seeing the, the big urgency, considering that we're talking about, Bill, you mentioned fifteen to twenty thousand. To keep, keep coverage, so to speak, until we bring in money from wherever. To reimburse ourselves. Are you comfortable with us making this decision about ARPA funds, including the schools? Uh, potentially the school using ARPA funds. Um, for at least the startup.
The school.
For next Tuesday.
Our, our ARPA funds without our designation, but.
Um, no, they can't, they can't, but we would, we would reimburse the school with the ARPA funds. Or we would use funds from one of our general.
And, and for the, for the, and I know there were other thoughts about this last week, but for the, for the background checks and the training. I don't sense there's an urgency, and I'll ask Cindy to run it by her board on Thursday for reimburse.
She should, and maybe we should be at that meeting.
I'll be at the Board of Finance meeting.
Okay, um, I can go to the school meeting. If it, if it helps, uncover that. I'm just make sure that we connect to make sure that we're saying the same things.
And ARPA funding, we're gonna discuss further, it'll be on our agenda, and.
Tuesday.
We'll go over that, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to just run down some of the things here, so I can break our brains a little more. And then send out a draft of things that I see as potential consideration for us for ARPA funding designation.
Alright, so I have something that has a date, says seven, twelve, twenty-three on it.
And I.
That's your draft.
I actually updated that today.
And have you sent that out?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
But what I, I, I'm glad to read over it, you've got the, the bulk of it, but, um, I will get this out to everybody in the morning.
Yeah, because we need Rogers.
And, and, and again, it's just. It's ballpark figures, it's drafts, it's some things that I know are coming up, or that I think should be coming up. Uh, just for consideration, and I haven't equated anything here, which would obviously be out of line. To that two hundred and fifty-six thousand, we think may be the balance, but. On, on the sheet, do you mind if I just read down this real quick, Catherine? Questions?
Yeah, now I'm gonna be, what I'm gonna be doing is scribbling it down.
Okay.
I'm gonna say, so.
Well, you've got most of it.
Don't go too fast.
You've got most of it already. If you look at the July twelfth items I sent out, but anyway, these are draft. Um, we've got cost from two different vendors for installation of split units at the senior center. Um. This may, may not be inclusive cuz I haven't got cost, whether or not we're gonna have to upgrade the generator there, but we're at roughly sixty-two to seventy thousand on that. Salary reimbursement for an employee that we adjusted their salaries because of COVID that was reduced, that's the twelve thousand three seventy. Town signage refurbishing, I put in for a replacement, twenty thousand, just for conversation purposes. Uh, citi, citizen, Astrid Citizen Upgrades Equipment Software, at the time I put in two thousand, Chris, has that been updated?
Is this, is this the laptop?
It includes the laptop. Includes the software.
It's gonna be updated in the IT portion of my expense list.
Okay.
We don't know what that amount is.
Who's the laptop, two monitors, software? Alright, new pickleball court, I just put in fifty thousand here for nothing more than discussion purposes.
Bill, is that, is it, I was having a little trouble following part of what you were telling about that. Is the new pickleball court where the basketball court is? Or a brand new one?
It, it would be a brand new one, but you know where the volleyball court is?
Yeah.
That is the highest ground. That would make most sense if we were to consider, and then we would move the volleyball nets, net.
Alright, I, I'm just, it's a no.
One thing I didn't, that you just reminded me that I didn't put on here, that I'm told by Public Works. Is those basketball courts, and this is something for the CNR, um, are gonna need resurfacing very soon.
Alright, that's what I was gonna bring up as, um, something that we probably need to expend.
Okay.
ARPA funds on.
Uh, new school bus, just put it in there, that's more or less CNR, but it's something for discussion. After school program, I put in three, this was just for emergency kit, snacks and whatever. Um, what I'm hearing from Cindy is they will pick that sort of stuff up and then bill us back.
Right.
Don't think we have to worry about that. Um, there is a new Ashford Volunteer Ambulance on the horizon. We're probably looking, Paul and I met on this today, briefly went over it, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Cuz it would take a two-year delivery if we ordered it, is that right, Paul?
Well, if that's the, if that's the case, it can't be ARPA.
No, no.
That's CNR.
I, and I, and in my new list, I, I put CNR, but. Um, Astrid Housing Authority Rent Subsidy, I think we settled on, they're looking for twenty thou, roughly twenty-one thousand. The things that I, I just added, um, were the old post office, Tremco House. Removal of the, um, oil tanks, the furnaces, soil testing, B one hundred, testing for septic. Um, and the theory, I, I think Joan tried to make that. That comment was that those are things that are gonna have to be done, no matter what we do with that building.
Yes, I understand.
Um, Astrid Fire Department, they need five defibrillators, actually they need six. But they're getting one donated, that's another fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so would you slow that one down, Astrid Fire Department, how many, five, how many, five defibrillators?
Roughly fifteen thousand.
Fifteen K.
Note Memorial Hall, new gutters. They are terribly disintegrating, we've got some hazardous situations that have been for the past couple of years on the handicap walk. With ice.
Yeah. By the way, um, Tremco and, uh, the old post office. And even, um, the Ashford Academy should probably have gutters. Well, when, uh, just so you know, when Roger and I went to look at, look at these. We could see where the water coming, you know, was coming off the building and seeping into the, into the building.
Well, those, those will certainly cost less than this, but the, the new, I got a price today. From a local contractor of ten thousand dollars for gutters for Note Memorial Hall.
Okay, thank you.
That is an somewhat of an urgent area that we've got to address because.
Yeah, ice.
The ice and, 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 and it's one of a, a very busy building, both by the library and, and whatever else is going on there. Um, with winter coming, it needs to be taken care of, Astrid Volunteer Fire Department, computerized new sign. Um, there's a request out there in the area of forty-two thousand dollars.
Oh my god.
Would be a computerized sign for in front of the firehouse that could help with volunteerism and everything, but there's. There's some priorities that we're gonna have to have set with the fire, fire department on, on what we'll be considering on that, but it is something that's been brought forward.
It's too bad we can't have a separate fundraising effort for, for that, that might be a popular thing to.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah.
Need some creative, there's a lot more money here than either we have in ARPA, or frankly, that we're gonna be able to allot in the CNR fund this year.
And we're gonna have to remember, we're gonna run out of ARPA's, and then we're gonna be, you know, still have to maintain all these buildings, et cetera.
Real quick, so I will, I will update this, Catherine, I'll send it to you and Roger and.
Yeah.
Board of Finance.
So what you might wanna put on there is.
A working.
Yeah, you want them, um, I, I'm just gonna mention the couple in passing, the basketball courts definitely need to be taken care of. Um, they're a safety issue right now, and the, um, what about the doors at Norton?
Um, those have to be addressed.
Yes, they do, and that's gonna be a bit pricey, they're the original doors. But they are also, uh, pretty unreliable and water seeps in through them.
Somewhere on my, one of my lists, I put in that for fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, well, that gives me, thank you, that gives me an idea of what you're thinking, and if you could send that out to both Roger and me. That would be awesome, we'll, uh, I know I'll be looking at any other requests that I've heard about.
Yeah.
Or ideas.
Okay.
Uh, did public, Public Works ask for anything?
Yeah, they need a new loader. They, I just heard today they like a new pickup. Um, Casey is working with Joe and they're compiling a list.
Yeah.
I've asked everybody to try to get a jump on, uh, I'd like to get a jump this year on the CNR committee again.
Uh, it's just starting November.
Yeah, well, I'd like to start it early if we can, so, anyway.
Okay.
I'm gonna move on to a new business, uh, board and commissions, I don't believe we have any appointments.
No, we don't.
Okay, I, you have a tax refund, Chris?
I do. Um. This is a triple header. All siding Connecticut General Statute twelve dash one twenty-nine to Jessica Tebow. One in the amount of sixty dollars and five cents, one in the amount of five fifty-five, seven, and seventy-two cents. And one in the amount of seven ninety-nine and eighty-one cents.
Ooh, they're small ones, that's good.
That was five hundred and seven hundred, right?
Okay, so, I make the motion to approve those?
I'll second that, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, agenda items for next Board of Selectmen's meeting, I think we've covered that. And I've got nine, ten.
Motion to adjourn, thank you.
Second that, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, have a good night.
You too.